All right. Good morning, folks. This is the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission meeting on Friday, July 9th. It is 10:01. We are going live with our webinar Zoom thing, and we are meeting this morning. We do these meetings every other week. This is a chance for commissioners to get together and chat amongst ourselves in accordance with Colorado's open meetings law. We do not have an agenda necessarily set, nor do we take public comment. We just chat amongst ourselves for all things good of the commission. And with that, I'd be happy to lead off with a topic that I've been thinking about if commissioners would bear with. And let me sort of ramble a little bit, but this has to do with financial assurances rulemaking. We are in a place in which we have posted under the Procedures Act, the initial set of rules. And we are quickly coming to a place where prehearing statements will be due. Right now, the CMO, the case management order, has prehearing statements due next Friday, I believe. A couple of thoughts on that. One, we received a motion yesterday from industry parties that was largely not opposed by other stakeholders to continue the prehearing statement deadlines for approximately two weeks. We received this morning in our inbox and in the e-filing, a corrected motion. The corrected motion fixes one inadvertent error from the original motion. And what that is, is that the the original motion said that witness testimony would be continued to be due on September 3rd. But that was inadvertent, and that's wrong. Actually, the case management order has witness testimony due the 10th. And so the new corrected motion fixes that inadvertent error. And that is the sum total of the correction according to my conversation with the movement. So, but with that, I, so first off, I'm generally supportive of that sort of motion. I feel like the financial assurances rulemaking is something that we want to obviously get right for the state of Colorado and giving folks more time to digest the initial draft that staff put out. And think about it is, I think, a very important component of rulemaking in general. The more time that we give for these sorts of things to percolate and give people a chance to think about, I think, the better. And in that regard, I would like to suggest a notion, a proposal, a supposal, perhaps. We're not in a place where we would act on anything today, but we can talk about things amongst ourselves. And so that's what I would like to do. In my mind, it might make sense to go beyond what was asked for in the motion and actually bifurcate our proceedings and move a portion of the financial assurances rulemaking further out to give everyone a chance to think about the ideas around financial assurances to continue to stakeholder and to engage and to talk amongst ourselves. I have heard from a number of parties, which I agree with, is that what we're doing is dramatically altering the current status of financial assurances. I want to do that in a manner that creates the correct balance. I think we all do. We want to create a better financial assurance protocol for the state of Colorado while not doing something that has unintended consequences of creating additional large sets of orphan wealth, et cetera. So I think that requires a lot of thought ahead of the lawyering that happens once we do prehearing statements and we move into responses and things of that sort. So I would throw out the idea that we potentially push back our hearing dates for financial assurances on one aspect, and that is the aspect that does not deal with the orphan, the new concept of the orphan well fund. Part of our financial assurances rulemaking that staff put out has the orphan well fund moving from mill levy to potential per well fee. I've also had discussions with stakeholders around, is it better to do it based upon production? I don't know the right answer, but I do think moving away from mill levy does make some sense. I think that's less controversial, and I think we can move forward with that component with our current hearing dates. But with regard to the other components, the bonding, the blanket bonds, the tiers and that, I think there's a lot that needs to be thought about in that aspect. And so I would be interested in having a discussion about potentially moving that out and away from the September, October hearing dates. In saying that, I'm very cognizant that we and all of our stakeholders are going to be very involved in the Air Division's greenhouse gas rulemaking, which is currently slated for December 15th to 17th. And then all of the lead up to that. And so I would not want to move our hearings in a manner that complicates stakeholder involvement at the Air Division. And so I would potentially suggest we think about getting our prehearing stuff done over the course of September, October, November, and potentially having hearing on the rest of financial assurances in the first couple of weeks of January of 2022. I think from my perspective, that would then allow what we have currently drafted and put out to potentially be reframed as a straw dog. And we could get informal comment on that. Again, not the orphan well piece, but the rest of it. I would need the staff and the AGs to sort of think about how we would reformat that and bring that to us for an action item. But I just sort of throw all that out there for my fellow commissioners' consideration. I'm not suggesting that a delay is for delay sake. I'm suggesting that a delay could create a appropriate period of time for additional stakeholder discussions amongst themselves, discussions with us, so that we could hopefully use that additional time to fully get to an initial rulemaking that we might publish that is closer in line with what success could look like. Not saying that what we've done so far is not successful. It's definitely given an opportunity for people to start throwing arrows and sort of thinking about. But as I've talked to stakeholders, I think some additional time would be prudent for us. So those are my ideas. I throw that out for us to sort of think about today. Again, we're not in any place to take any action items. And I would welcome any input from my commissioners. I would also welcome input from Julie. We're on first name basis today. It's a Friday. It's not a Wednesday. I don't have a tie on. And so Julie, if you had ideas as well around these concepts, look to my fellow commissioners, look to you in terms of, you know, this this concept.
I guess I'll just jump in and say that I'm good with the concept. I think, you know, the opportunity to have dialogue always helps. And I know that this was a tight timeline and stakeholders had asked about shifting it. And I've taken a hard line just thinking that that was the right path, but I'm more than happy to build out a little bit more time to work through some of the questions and issues and dialogue. I think I've had really, really good engagement with a lot of different stakeholders on this topic. And I'm excited about it.
Julie, you're closer probably than the rest of us to that stakeholder dialogue that may be occurring. Do you agree that an additional window of time could potentially be appropriate or helpful or geared toward better success if people had some more time? In some of the talk I've had, even with the movements relevant to motions, et cetera, and to stakeholders on the other side, everybody right now is really geared up toward prehearing statements. Even if we just do two more weeks, they're still going to be doing prehearing statements. And that sort of forecloses in my mind, the opportunity for folks to get around a table. Do you agree?
I think so. Yeah. I mean, the one thing I do want to flag is that if the if the commission would like to make a decision about timing, given that next Friday is the deadline for prehearing statements, we would need to follow our sage AAG's advice about how to make that decision, but we need to make it quickly just to not ruin everybody's weekend working on prehearing statements.
And my thought, let's have discussion amongst ourselves. And if there's consensus that this might be a path, then we might do kind of a, hey, does everybody kind of agree? And then that would send the notion that no one needs to worry about prehearing statements over the weekend. And then next week, we could actually take formal action. But I would turn to Kyle, our AAG, to get some idea around what we can do today versus what we can't do. And then I obviously want to hear from all of my fellow commissioners on these lines.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, I did have some discussions and recommended that because it's not agendized today, that the commission hold off making a final decision on anything until potentially next Wednesday, when it can get onto an agenda. And everyone can be aware of that discussion, but I don't see any problem in having a conceptual discussion today and to see where everybody sits. I also think it's possible that the hearing officer could sort of issue a temporary stay in the deadline of prehearing statements pending commission's final conclusion, perhaps next Wednesday. But I would of course defer to Mimi and our hearing officer in that regard.
Okay, thanks for that, Kyle. Do other commissioners desire to weigh in? I see that you're unmuted. Maybe you want to speak first and Karen's unmuted as well. So want to hear from her.
Thanks. I didn't actually realize I was unmuted, but I did. I did just have a couple of thoughts. I mean, I appreciate the motion and the intent to have a little bit more time to put together prehearing statements, et cetera. And I support that in general, you know, in the idea of having a little bit more time for those kinds of things. I am a little bit hesitant about. And I do want to have more discussion, which I think we would do on Wednesday on the timeline, just because I do think this is a really important piece of all of our rulemaking that we just completed. So yeah, that's really all I was going to say.
Can I clarify kind of what I think I think I thought you said? Which is the the proposal that staff has submitted to the Secretary of State as a draft proposal will get pulled. It becomes a, it gets, we pull off the orphan well piece, and that will get discussed ahead of time and something will get approved by the commission. I don't know what that timeframe is going to look like. Does that stay in the same timeframe that we originally discussed or is in the is in the docket? And then the remainder of it becomes the straw proposal for people to continue to give feedback and discuss. Commission and staff get to refine it. Are we going to have a discussion and it gets refined? Staff refines, and then that's what gets submitted. And then we have a formal hearing on that piece. And trying to understand the logistics and what exactly it's going to happen. And if the straw proposal will still just look exactly like what we, what staff submitted to the Secretary of State as the the starting place for discussion as a straw proposal.
Yes, yes, and yes. I mean, I threw a lot out there, but my notion would be that we allow the orphan wealth fee piece to move forward as planned. And so right now, we've got, I don't know, a dozen or so dates in September and October for hearings. Wouldn't necessarily need all those dates at all to finalize a rule around that component. The remainder of the staff draft would be redefined as a straw dog, straw man, and we would get some informal comment from our stakeholders around that. And we would relieve them from needing to worry about prehearing statements around that. And then we would then potentially have staff do another, post another under the APA rulemaking around the rest of the financial assurances other than the orphan well. And then we would move forward with that with prehearing October, November, and then an actual hearing in January, which gets us outside of running afoul of the greenhouse gas rulemaking, which is going to be November, December kind of ish timeframe.
So logistically, I've never, I've never been involved in pulling part of a rule. So I know that that this, it triggers all sorts of timelines. Once we submit something to the Secretary of State. So in order to continue for the financial assurance piece to continue on the dates that we had already set, are we pulling only part of the rule and asking the Secretary of State to keep the financial assurance piece? I'm just trying to figure out how we do that legally or through the APA process and what that looks like. Or sorry, maybe I'm still misunderstanding. We're pulling everything and we have to resubmit the financial assurance piece?
Not. So number one, we're just talking around a notion today. Is this a good idea? And if we get to a point where we're all sort of like, yeah, this does make some sense. What I would suggest is I would direct Director Murphy and AAG Davenport to go figure it out and come back to us on Wednesday with with the plan that is in sync with the APA and that is in sync with the notion that we're thinking about today. But the notion that we're thinking about today would be to be able to move forward with the orphan well fee piece to turn the rest of it into a straw dog, to get informal comment, but potentially renotice under the APA that other component that's not the orphan wealth piece. And I would, and Karen, this has not been done in my mind. And so how we do this is still to be determined. But I think, at least in my mind, it's worthy of consideration of the notion based upon the discussions that I've had with people is that we've got a really tricky multi-component layer here. And the getting the balance right with regard to the financial assurances is really, really important. And I've seen through mission change that the more time we give to parties to sort of think through issues before they start prehearing things and lawyering up, et cetera, the better the outcome. And that's why, in my mind, I'm worthy of the notion, if we can figure out how to get it done under the Administrative Procedures Act, I'd like to explore it. And so taking this opportunity this morning to talk about it with you guys, see if I'm all crazy with this idea or if there's some merit to it. And then if we think that there's some merit, then we would go direct staff to go figure out how to make this this notion into more of a written document that's in compor with the APA.
Thanks. John, I'm supportive of exploring.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions and thoughts. So one, I'm trying to understand. So we've got a fiscal year in the state of Colorado, July to July. We've been allocated our funding for the orphan well program up until next July now. I guess I'm trying to understand what the the need is if we are going to postpone financial assurance to allow more time, the need to bifurcate the orphan well fee element of that. If in order to be able to have it come into effect on January 1, if really we needed to come into effect more towards the end of the fiscal year, unless I'm misunderstanding things.
John, I would prefer to move the orphan well piece a little bit more quickly because it will require legislative adjustments that would need to be taken up in the spring. And so understanding understanding what your decision is on that as a commission, a little bit earlier helps. But you're right, we could easily fold it into a January hearing and still be able to work through it with the legislature. It would just be a tighter conversation.
No, that's fair. I didn't think about that, but that makes sense to be able to have that as part of a conversation within that, although I also think that we could read the tea leaves a little bit and have a bill set up legislatively, even if we did need to push it along with the other ones. So I mean, I think there's a couple of ways to approach that, but and then number two, so one thing I'm wondering here. I wonder if it makes sense to put a little more structure into a timeline and some some clear boundaries, because here we've got a set of draft rules that were formal draft rules that people are already working on prehearing statements for. And many of them are probably well into their prehearing statements at this point. And I don't have a problem like re-categorizing these as as straw dog rules. I would, I would encourage though stakeholders to continue to create a timeline, perhaps along the same timeline as been suggested by industry in their motions, so two weeks out of the original date, for them to submit the comments on what now would be straw dog rules, so that we have a clear understanding of how they feel about these straw dog rules. And we know what conversations need to happen in order to create the next set of draft rules and kind of compress that timeline a little bit more than perhaps Jeff, what you're indicating. Because I wonder, after seeing these prehearing statements, even if we determine that there are going to be prehearing statements on the draft, on the straw dog rules, I think until we see these, we may not fully understand how far apart we are on things or how close together on things or really what the the big areas of contention are. And then from there, perhaps we can build an appropriate timeline as far as trying to get this rulemaking accomplished in a realistic fashion. I mean, once we see these prehearing statements, we may have a better idea of how long it's going to take to actually resolve some of the issues. And I've certainly talked to stakeholders and I think I've got a pretty good idea. But but every time I read these prehearing statements, I read new things that I didn't necessarily hear in stakeholder conversations right off the bat. So so as I look at that and I say, okay, well, we've got you know, next Friday was supposed to be prehearing statements due. We pushed that out two weeks. Now we've got basically comments on the straw dog if we keep that timeline. And then, you know, we create another month or six weeks from there to work on stuff before we submit the next draft set of rules, which let's say that's what, mid-September? And then what I can't remember, is there a 60 or a 90 day posting requirement once we do SVP? Because we don't have to resubmit, we don't have to resubmit to the Secretary of State at that point, or we do.
I think it depends, John, on on the work that Kyle and I need to do, you know, over the weekend, basically, or, you know, the early next week to bring forward some different timelines for you to consider. And I think it, I think it makes sense to look at both bifurcating, for lack of a better term, or pulling orphan well program out or not. And kind of look at both options or keeping them together and thinking about an interim filing, but that I think will help answer a lot of a lot of your your questions and concerns and seeing how this how we can continue the conversation in that way. Sorry if I jumped on on my question, Jeff.
I think, I think that's good. And I do think so. I guess my point is I could see us being able to realistically have you know, the the hearing first week in November and still give people plenty of time, but maybe, but after we see the the comments on the straw dog, then maybe we determine, oh, that doesn't work. Maybe we go into January. So I just want to, I want to make sure that we're taking this time and people are utilizing this time because I've also seen these timelines get pushed and stakeholders and everyone still waiting until the last minute to do everything, right? And so certainly don't want to see that happen. And I still, I think I'm on the fence as far as whether to pull the orphan well fee or not. So
And try, I appreciate those comments. I don't know if that's the right idea or not to bifurcate and go with orphan well ahead of time or not. My idea had been circulating in my mind was similar to Julie's is that we will need a legislative solution on that front and getting that done ahead of time. I agree with you. We could probably read the tea leaves and get that set up as well. And maybe it's better to just sort of do it all in one fell swoop. And whether that's, you know, before greenhouse gas in November or after in December. I'll actually leave that to Julie and Mimi and Kyle to think about early next week and maybe bring something back to us on Wednesday, provided all of us are in agreement that resetting just a little bit makes some sense. The other piece I would say is, yeah, I was thinking along your lines in that if we re-categorize some or all of what was posted as a straw man, then I'd like some informal comment around that. Maybe we get that informal comment two weeks, three weeks hence. And then we can sort of see how close or how far apart we may be. That'll help us educate in terms of whether we do this in a reformatted November hearing or in a December, or I'm sorry, January hearing, et cetera. So I, yeah, and then I guess finally, I'd like us to give direction on at a minimum, the motion so that people can have their weekends back. And I for one would say, yeah, I'm fine with grant, with staff granting a motion, giving to, at a minimum, if none of the rest of this stuff works out, everybody's got at least two more weeks on prehearing statements. So that's that's an okay for me. So at some point, everybody give a thumbs up on that so that people will know whether they need to work this weekend on prehearing statements. Bill, we haven't heard from you and I see you're now, so you're up.
Sure. So so I'll start kind of backwards with regards to the motion. I'm kind of, I can signpost it that I'm pretty good with with pushing those those filings and as proposed in the motion with the with the same timeline as originally contemplated. Now, moving on from there, you know, a lot of, a lot of our stakeholders were kind of waiting for the draft rules to come out before kind of crafting their proposals and their ideas around what they wanted to see from the financial assurances, you know, from more than just a thematic perspective. And so now that we have them out, I am, I'm in in favor of any time we can add to build consensus and to really high grade those issues that are going to get the most attention, have the most divergence of viewpoints, so we can really focus our attention in that regard. So if there is, and you know, we'll wait to Wednesday to kind of find out what that timeline looks like. But but you know, if there's a need or a benefit there to to get us really dialed into to more specific issues to wrestle with, I think that we're going to have a more productive rulemaking outcome. So that's kind of my two cents in that regard. I'm, I don't know if I have an opinion right now on bifurcating the rulemaking between the orphan well issue as well as the financial or and the financial assurance piece. But I do think that there is value in showing progress in this process. And so if there's a way that we can do that and really take a, you know, a nice chunk out of the overall rulemaking, I'd be in favor of doing it that way. So those are kind of, this is kind of where I sit with 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 an adjusted timeline. I also want to be respectful of the urgency of this issue, right? You know, we've heard from a lot of stakeholders that, you know, this is something that is very important to them. It is, it is very important. It's very important to the state of Colorado and I want to make it, you know, make sure that we get it done. You know, with all due diligence. And so so long as there's not, you know, a tremendous timeframe adjustment, I think January sounds reasonable, just kind of at first impression. But I'd like to see what what that timeline looks like when we hear back from Julie and Kyle next Wednesday and go from there. So that's kind of where I sit on the matter. I'll take it back to you, Jeff.
And then I just wanted to add that I guess I'm generally supportive of what's being proposed, at least at the very least, extending the filing deadline for the prehearing conferences. And I do think probably also generally supportive of bifurcating this rulemaking. But of course, you know, CDPH is happy to defer to COGCC staff and professional commissioners on how you schedule things. And we'll, we'll do our best to support whatever, whatever schedule you work on. But the only point that I, or a couple of points, just wanted to make sure the other commissioners are aware. Whatever schedule you work on. But the only point that I or a couple of points, just wanted to make sure the other commissioners are aware. I have shared some tentative air quality control commission, rulemaking filing deadlines and prehearing statement or prehearing conference dates. With Jeff and Julie and Mimi to to allow them to try and work around those as they schedule this out. Keep in mind those that those are still also very tentative and. Those won't be finalized until after the September rulemaking request occurs. So just wanted to share that and then also wanted to share my thought on John, you had suggested potentially maybe. Are you floated the option of maybe waiting until January for all of these rules and not tackling the orphan well. Fee component this fall. And my only thought is that it does seem like that would be pushing us a little bit too close to the the deadline for for getting things. Through the legislature and it seems like in my experience, things have sort of been delayed often. So I think. It would be it'd be pretty bad if we sort of missed our very narrow of window of opportunity to finalize that component of the rulemaking before we go to the legislature. But those are just some thoughts that I wanted to share.
Thanks, Sean. Really appreciate your being with us and keeping us synced up with the things that are happening over at the air division. And you know, I'm sure that. If we end up with kind of everybody in agreement that the notion is worthy of consideration by staff that they can. Continue to work with you early next week in terms of syncing this up in the right fashion.
And I actually did have a question and I know we won't have an answer or have a revised timeline until the hearing next Wednesday. But I did have a deadline for CDPHE divisions to provide their thoughts on the draft rules. I gave them the deadline of, I think, July 5. And I'm considering probably reaching out to them. And so first, I don't really anticipate very significant comments from any of our environmental divisions. But what I'm considering, you know, given this discussion today is reaching out to them and saying. If you do have comments on the rule 205, the orphan well fee piece, please get those to us by July 5 and I'll share those with COGCC staff. But the other components, I'm considering giving them the heads up that, hey, you can add a build a couple more weeks into your review timeline. Does that sound fair? Okay.
Sean, and Sean, let's let's talk offline. I think letting him know it's going to change is good, but if. If the decision is to kind of have a straw dog and have staff re-release rules, it might be. Anyway, well, we can talk. I'm sorry, I realized I'm like dribbling down into the like my corisee, not just the weeds, right? Like I'm way down in the roots and. But nobody else needs to hear. We go down that path.
Excellent use of my corisee.
I'm. Great book about fungus right now.
I just wanted to just ask a quick question. If if we extended just the prehearing statement deadline. Julie, were you all planning on providing a revised draft? At a certain timeframe after that, I was just kind of curious, like if we don't otherwise change other pieces of the rulemaking. What would be that timeframe that we might see a revised draft?
Um, my intent has always been to try to get a revised draft out after prehearing statements. And before responses. And so I think either under the current schedule or under the schedule that's been proposed in the motion. I think staff has about. Three weeks to digest, three weeks or three or four week gap there. And so we would have to turn it around. Fairly quickly. To give parties time to respond and digest. So it would. I've been looking at the week of mid-August as being a very dynamic week for me.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. Um. And I think I already kind of said this before, but I'm supportive of the, you know, the motion that's. That's out there for extending the prehearing statements deadline. I'm also sort of on the fence of the bifurcation proposal and and. When and how we do everything and maybe even thinking that if we bifurcate, maybe there's a couple other pieces we could pull into the initial rulemaking and then. Different pieces, you know, for later on. So anyway, that's just where my mind is at right now.
So. Go ahead.
Want to tell people that my computers could restart in 17 minutes. So if I evaporate. I knew it was coming, but maybe nobody else did.
Okay, um, well, I think we've heard consistently from everyone. That the notion is worthy of staff thinking about it. And. I think we've also heard, actually, I don't know if we've heard from Karen yet, but I think we've heard from. Everyone that with regard to the motion that there's support at a minimum for the motion to be granted. Karen, are you in that space as well?
Yes, I'm supportive of that. Reminder to folks, I'm on annual leave next week, so I will not be a part of. The discussion. I don't know if I can turn some thoughts into hearings officer Larson and just let her know ahead of time what I'm thinking, or I don't know how that works.
Can I call you?
Yeah. And then the more I think about it, originally, I was kind of. Just I'm thinking it's I think it's better if we keep everything all together. And I I do think that if we need a legislative change, I think we talk to the governor's office and leadership in both houses and say. We think there's going to be this thing coming and our timeframe has pushed out a little bit, but can you put a placeholder in for? This issue in general and we move it all along together. And I'm only thinking this because I'm. Sometimes there's unintended consequences when you do one thing and it affects others that you weren't thinking about. And so I. I'm thinking maybe we keep it all together. And I also think that it just keeps the discussion. All in the same space, but. Okay, so yes, I'm I'm supportive of giving people time to give appropriate feedback and input. And I want to be thoughtful of doing the right thing. And I welcome having that discussion.
Great. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, everybody, for letting me sort of hijack the beginning part of our meeting with this notion. I think Julie, do you have good direction for some early work next week and maybe come back to us on Wednesday with some ideas? And then we can, you know, sort of formally. Figure that out, which is the best path for the state of Colorado as the work we're doing. And I think we've informed everyone that. At a minimum, if this notion decides to go nowhere, the motion that was corrected and that was filed is approvable. And so people can take their weekend and realize they've got a little more time.
Yep. And Jeff, I will do my best to get. That that information out to commissioners and parties in advance of Wednesday. So. I'm not, I don't want to ask you all to digest it on the fly. And I'd love to give you 24 hours at least to think about.
Thank you. And I apologize in ahead of time that we're creating more work for you and staff, but. Really appreciate your getting that out ahead of time so that everybody can digest it ahead of the meeting on Wednesday. And Karen, I think you certainly in realizing you're on annual leave. Definitely talk with Julie and once she's got her ideas out and provide that perspective so that you are heard from. While you are on your annual leave. Okay, um. I think we're good with that topic of discussion. Thanks again, everybody, for allowing that to occur. And do we have other matters this morning that folks wanted to raise for the good of the cause? Sean?
I did have a quick question and maybe this is just a separate discussion I should have with with Mimi or her staff. And it could very well be user error with how to locate documents in the e-filing system. But when I search using the docket number for the financial assurances, rulemaking. The document list that you pull up. At least in my what I'm seeing, it doesn't have the. The document name clearly listed in the the list. So you have to actually click in the list to figure out what the contents of the document are. And. I'm wondering, am I am I maybe doing something wrong? Or once we get to the hearing process, is that going to be fixed? You can clearly see party X. Prehearing statement, party, party Y rebuttal, or we're just gonna have to, okay.
No, Sean, I I'm not quite sure. Perhaps the matter of even refreshing your system because it is showing up on my side. That was fixed about two weeks ago now. So let's talk offline and I'll double check again this morning. To see if that has somehow gone away.
But we'll make sure. Sean may not be on his own in terms of that, and we may need to give instructions to all of our parties that they need to refresh. In order to be able to fully capture the new naming.
Yeah, and yeah, and I'm guessing that perhaps might be the issue. So. We can talk offline and we'll we'll do a little diagnosing on our end and see if something's going to arrive, but.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'll go ahead and give that a try and then follow up with you if I'm still having trouble with it.
Okay, super.
And Mimi, thanks for getting the name inserted into the e-filing system. That's really helpful.
It is helpful, yes.
Should go without saying, but that's great. What else, guys? With the understanding that there doesn't have to be anything else. Okay, I'm not seeing anything else. I think that our work session has been successful this morning and. We'll let everybody get back to the other things they're doing. We'll see everybody on Wednesday at our next. Regularly scheduled meeting, which is at 9:00 AM. And we wish everybody a good weekend.